The time now is 2:36 on December 6. I would like to convene CD Council Successor Agency to the Westminster Redevelopment So the meeting call to order, please take it real quickly.
Mayor, you have a quorum with Vice Mayor Nguyen and Councilwoman Van West absent.
Thank you very much. So salute to the flag today by Councilmember Menzo. So would you please stand?
Please join me in saluting our nation's flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you to Councilmember Menzo for doing the salute to the flag. Next is auto communication. And I would like to remind that auto communication for agenda items only, which is today. We'll go over to the item which is strategic plan, go number one. So at this time, I would like to open up for auto communication. So Madam Clark, can you go ahead and read that into the record?
This is the time of the meeting that members of the public may address the city council regarding items on the agenda. Unless otherwise extended by a majority vote of the city council, comments shall be limited to three minutes per speaker. Any person wishing to address the city council in person should complete a green speaker slip that is provided at the entrance to the council chambers and submit the card to When your name is called, please step to the podium at that time, state your name, and city of residence for the record.
Thank you very much. Go ahead and ask for the first speaker, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank Terry Rains for allowing me to go first instead of having No disrespect to my brothers and sisters in the law enforcement and fire careers. I don't understand this. And you remember, I stood up in front of this council a little ways back, and I asked, who was behind the phone surveys? I didn't get an answer from anybody. So now we know who was behind the phone surveys. Obviously, it was one or more people on this council. You need to balance your budget, or watch your spending, or something. Because every time something like this comes up, it's all a threat that's held over their heads, that you're going to cut police and fire services if we don't get extra tax money. That's not only is it distressing, it's disgusting, folks. It really is. Because we have certain members of the public, as long as you wave that flag in front of them, they're going to get paranoid about it. They're going to vote for anything you want, because they know what the crime rate is, they know what the homeless problem is, and they're going to be scared that if they don't vote for this, that it's going to get even worse than it already is. I live by Trask and Hoover. And driving westbound on Trask, as soon as you get by the railroad tracks, you can feel your suspension banging around, because the road surface is really crappy there. However, they put in the nice bike lanes there. I never see anybody use the bike lanes on Trask. As a matter of fact, you're still riding down the sidewalk. They won't even go in the bike lanes. So you have that situation. We have streets that need repair, and I'm sure there's lots of other things that Public Works would love to do if they had the money for it. What I don't want to see is what happened after measure, what was it, Measure Y passed right off the bat. You dumped $75,000 for the TED Parade. How about if we back off the parade and the festival for a year, and try to recoup some of the money that is spent on things that are not actually necessary to run this city? And I see I'm running out of time, and it's just a shame that the other two council members couldn't take it upon themselves to show up for this meeting. Amy might be out passing out Narcan samples that she posted on Facebook that, "I'll make sure you get them free of charge." Sounds like she bought a bunch. Thank you, folks.
Our next speaker is Terry Rains.
Lack of planning on your part does not constitute an emergency on our part. Deja vu, August 2022. Once again, this important meeting to consider placing a tax major on the ballot is being held in the middle of a workday with just 24 hours' notice and no Zoom access. We get it. You don't want us to know about it. You don't want us to hear, don't want to hear our input. You don't want us to hear your discussion about it. You just want our money. Direction to conduct the survey was given back in June, so why wasn't it done until mid-November? Councilmembers can't even be bothered to attend meetings. There have been more absences with this council than ever before. Amy and Nam Kwan not bothering to show up today after likely stating they would be here, chicken shit. Hin. I'm sure the city manager reached out to all the council members to schedule this meeting at a time that they would be available. The public demands a full explanation from her and/or the mayor as to why the two chicken shits aren't here today. The vote cannot even happen now because of them. Today's vote is to give us, the residents, our constitutional right to vote on this major. It is not about them raising taxes. Those two idiots don't give a shit about this city. And I'm sorry, Charlie, but their absence and their antics warrant my profanity. The ROV deadline to submit a major for the primary ballot is this Friday, December 8. Why isn't that even mentioned in the staff report? Seriously? The city is trying to put this on the primary ballot using a declared fiscal emergency not even discussed publicly before it was voted on back in June when this year's budget was adopted. That vote was for O with Councilwoman Ho absent. California Constitution Article 13CB states, quote, "The election required by this subdivision shall be consolidated with a regularly scheduled general election for members of the governing body of the local government, except in cases of emergency declared by the unanimous vote of the governing body," unquote. The interpretation seems to be of the members present, but I firmly believe the intent was for a consensus of the entire body, all members. But if Councilwoman Ho had been there, she would have likely voted yes. So no biggie, as long as the elapsed time since that vote is not in conflict with state law. Why does the staff report use an example of a November ballot with an April 1 effective date instead of a March ballot with a July 1 effective date as proposed here? The survey only had 238 interviews of likely voters compared to 340 last year. One-third of those likely voters didn't even remember Measure Y from just a year ago. So you are basing the public's response on just 0.5% of the city's 53,000 registered voters and just 0.26% of the city's 91,000 residents. Seriously? I could have given you a more representative sample from my Westminster Buzz Facebook group. Results show a lot less support for this major versus last year, like 15 to 20 points difference. I won't waste my time covering the errors and typos in the ordinance, resolution, staff report, and survey, because the required two-thirds aren't even here to vote. Same goes for providing my input on the major's wording, sunset clause, et cetera. Don't forget the two losers who caused today's shitshow. The public sure as the hell won't. Thank you.
Our next speaker is going to be Tim Hogan.
We all know the history. We all know the arguments. We're all aware of our situation. We ask only that we, as citizens, be given an opportunity to weigh in on if we will accept an additional tax. We don't seek a display of false courage from a council, or we don't seek a display of false courage from any council member, any grandstand against perceived injustices, or a bold stance in favor of some indefinite principle. We do not wish for, nor do we desire, some bold adherence to some inflexible ideology that requires blind, foolish opposition to taxation. We ask only that you do your duty. Give the citizens the opportunity to decide for ourselves whether or not we will be taxed. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kyle Cisok.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members, city manager, and city staff. Thank you for being here, performing your civic duty, and the Westminster Police Department, or I'm sorry, the Westminster Police Officers Association appreciates your support. The WPOA has great disappointment with the council members who did not prioritize city business, especially this important matter, and could not be here today. The WPOA, city, and all the residents are affected by this, and the truth is, not attending this meeting today is the first step towards defunding the police, fire, and all of public safety. So thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Our next speaker is going to be Roland Perez.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. The Westminster Police Officers Association knows how important fiscal stability is, and thank you for your attendance today. We know that the two council members that did not show up were very disappointed in them not being here today and knowing that they'd rather play politics than with the livelihoods of our public servants that dedicate their careers and lives to the city of Westminster. This should have been a higher priority with them. The Westminster Police Officers Association considers this a defunding of the police and fire departments. I want to thank each of you personally. Mayor, thanks for being here today. Councilmember Menzo, thank you for being here today. Councilmember Ho, thank you very much for being here today. That's it. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mike Tucker.
Oh, sorry. Please state your name for the record.
Can I start now? Good afternoon, everyone. If you recall, I was here a few months ago, and I did one, the city member, everybody about number one. He defend my family, my wife, my kid, with his partner.
Can you stop the clock for a minute, please? I just want to remind you, for those who come in late, today is a special meeting about the financial situation and the agenda, or the item on the agenda. So any public comments should direct to that agenda item only. We can't go outside of that item. We have the policy that we have to follow. So I hope that you understand. If you are talking about the item that we have on the agenda today, you are welcome to continue. But if you are talking something else, I afraid that, you know, it's not the right time.
I'm going to talk about lawsuit in that electricity thing.
That, can you wait, can you wait until, can you wait until the regular meeting, which is on December 13?
So I cannot talk about lawsuit today?
No, you can't.
Yeah, okay. That's fine. That's fine.
I'm sorry.
No problem. Okay. So when, can I, today or next two weeks?
On the 13th, yes.
Next Wednesday.
Yeah, just the foul complaint again, major number one.
Today is a special meeting for that particular item.
Yeah, I respect that. It's okay. All right.
Our next speaker is Wen Hang.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Today, I don't have a big issue, but only request. Number one, I want to restart a five-minute speaking. Number two, I want to put an agenda. We cannot wait until the end of a meeting. The last time I was here.
Sir, same thing for him. We can, if you are talking about the agenda item today, you are welcome. But otherwise, you have to wait until the 13 regular meeting.
December 13?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thanks for understanding.
Our last speaker is Kai Dao.
Kai Dao?
May I ask, are you talking about the item today?
Sure. Yes. So the item we are talking about is, sorry, I was reading on it, but I'm getting old, so I totally forgot. So what is it that we're talking about here?
On the agenda, you have item two here, strategic plan, goal number one, achieve financial stability, consideration of a resolution and ordinance placing a measure on the March 5 ballot, asking voters if they want to add a half-cent transaction use sales tax. That's the subject matter.
Thank you so very much, Mr. Attorney, city attorney. So I guess I'm only here, I'm only allowed to speak on the agenda that you set. And I wonder, I was gonna actually spend a lot of time to share my thought about it, but what happened to the councilmen here? They're not here. Whom am I speaking to? I want to share my opinion with them. So I'm very disappointed that I was gonna... So the item we are talking about is, sorry, I, uh, I was reading on it, but, uh, I'm
getting old, so I totally forgot. So what is it that we're talking about here?
On the agenda, you have item two here. Strategic Plan Goal Number One: Achieve Financial Stability. Consideration of a Resolution and Ordinance Placing a Measure on the March 5th Ballot: Asking Voters If They Want to Add a Half-Cent Transaction Use Sales Tax. That's the subject matter.
Thank you so very much, uh, Mr., uh, Attorney, City Attorney. So I guess I'm only here, I'm only allowed to speak, uh, on the agenda that you set. And, um, I wonder, I was gonna actually spend a lot of time to share my thought about it, but what happened to the, the councilman here? They're not here. Whom am I speaking to? I, I want to share my opinion with them. So I'm very disappointed that I was gonna, you know, spend time and effort to come to the city council meeting, to voice my concern, to share my thought with you guys. And this is not the first time. And Mr. Law, uh, Mr. Attorney, this is exactly, I think, why they're missing, because they know they're being served, they're being sued, and he knows he's gonna be served.
Again.
So that's why I told you, he, his doing is interfering with his job on the council. If you want me to speak on the issue, what happened to the councilman, what happened to our Vice Mayor? I rarely see him on the dials when I speak. What happened? If he served the people, but he rarely sit on the seat to listen to us, to find out what we want, so how he's gonna, he's gonna serve us? And you want me to speak on the issues only? What's the point if he's not here? So, Mr. Attorney, I'd like you to address the issue in the future. Like I said, if the council members doing things that interfering with the city business, meaning that he went on YouTube to defend orders and now he's being sued, now he's hiding from people that's serving him, and he, he did not dare to come to the city meeting. Is that interfering with the, the city business, uh, Mr. Mayor? That's my thoughts, sir. Thank you.
Okay, I, I do have a response for you. I allow you to speak because you commented about these two absences. That's fine. But you, when you bring about the suing and these, that's a different, that's a different subject. That's the reason why I want, okay, that's fine, but please, that's okay. Thank you very much. So, um, all right, thank you very much. So now we are going on with, uh, item for the day, which is a strategic plan, goal number one, achieve financial stability. And the proposal is considered consideration of resolution and ordinance placing a measure on the, on March 5th, 2024 ballot, asking voters if they want to add a half percent CD transaction and use sales tax. So at this point here, I would like to ask for staff report.
Mayor, um, before we begin, may I ask a few questions?
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, as you well know, um, there's no, you know, we need a, a majority, a council to be able to, be able to do anything with this agenda item. So my question is, uh, City Manager, I'm sure, and again, I understand that you cannot force any of us to be here. You could only, you know, do your best to give us information that we need. Why is not, is Vice Mayor and Councilmember West not present today? Did they give you any reasons of where they were gonna be today?
One council member, um, has stated that, uh, would not be available today, uh, couldn't make it, and, uh, the other council member, um, was not feeling well.
Um, but my, uh, my question was, did they give you a reason? I mean, I'm, I'm pretty confident that you made the, aware of the importance and the significance of this, uh, this meeting today. And did they give you a reason of where, what was so important that was more important than the city's business? That they chose that over this, over the, the community who elected them to represent, uh, residents and to do the city's business? What was the reason? Did they give you any reason? Just?
Can't speak for them, um, just that they were not available. At, when this, when we arranged for, um, scheduling of this meeting, when we, you know, tried to make sure that we would have, uh, a quorum, um, as, and as many of the council members as possible, um, each and every council member was reached out regarding, uh, this potential date and time, uh, so options were provided, and, um, at the time, uh, we had confirmed four out of five.
But no specific reason was given, uh, is to, I have a family emergency, uh, I gotta go sit next to somebody's bedside, they're dying? I mean, what was, what's the reason that they can't be here?
The, not my, not my story to tell, unfortunately.
Okay, and then, um, I, I remember seeing the Vice Mayor, um, at her, um, tree lighting. He looked perfectly fine. He said he was feeling ill, so I don't, I don't get it. Um, so you predict, he's predicting that he's not gonna feel well the next day? Is that the story that I'm getting? I mean, I know when I'm sick, I do everything in my power to, uh, down emergency, whatever I gotta do to get myself ready for the next day. I don't say, oh, I think I'm gonna be sick tomorrow. Uh, I just don't roll, I don't know who operates that way. We were elected for, uh, to do the city's business, and I think that we should, uh, do everything we can to be here. I mean, we're all busy, the, we, God knows, everybody knows, and how busy the mayor and all of us are. I have a full-time job. I'm in charge of 60 people every day, what they do every single day, so I, I gotta do what I gotta do to get here. And I would, I would, I would think that they would be respectful enough to be here, to do their job, what they were elected to do. I just don't undersee, I don't understand, uh, they're, they're playing games? I don't know. I just, I don't see there's an excuse for them not being here. And, um, I'm, I'm okay with, with the council, my two council colleagues are, are there here, what they wanna do, but I don't under, I don't see us wasting, uh, they're, they're the ones that are wasting our time, they're wasting the public's time for us to proceed with, uh, this presentation that I'm sure you guys worked really hard to put together. If there's, there's no action, we can take on this today. So if, if, if we are gonna choose to, uh, table this, and then we're gonna go through this presentation again on Friday, so we're gonna, us three council members who are here today, are we gonna have to go, sit through here, through this presentation twice? And just for their benefit, we have to listen to it twice and just for them to understand? If, if they choose to show up, if this council chooses to table this through another day, so we're gonna listen to this twice? I don't know if I'm interested in listening to this twice.
So, because if, if I may, um, if there is a desire for the council to adjourn this to, you know, another day tomorrow or Friday, um, and we can get into that discussion of what that looks like, um, we have a member of our consulting team who will be here today to provide this presentation. In any circumstance of a regular adjourn meeting, we wouldn't be replay, we wouldn't be having the same presentation twice. So as it stands right now, um, you are correct. If there is a desire for the council to place anything on any kind of ballot, it does require a four-fits vote of the city council, which clearly there's only three of you. However, our obligation as staff, based on our strategic plan, we wanted to bring survey results to you and the community, um, you know, in, in, ahead of Friday's deadline. And I understand that the, the timing of this is not ideal. It's not ideal for staff either. It's just the way that things worked out since the last time we all met, speaking about this back in June. There have been a lot of, um, things that have happened and a lot of distractions. That being said, you know, we do have someone from the consulting team, we have a presentation, there's a presentation of the results. Um, this is being recorded, so anyone who would like to watch the meeting and the, the results of the presentation and watch the discussion can feel free to do so. We would not be anti, we would not be expected to redo this meeting tomorrow or Friday if it's the desire of the council to adjourn.
Okay, and I get that, and, and I appreciate the hard work that was put into this. Um, if, if that were to transpire, where this council would choose to table it and have another special meeting, uh, how do you expect the, the two, if the two were to, uh, be present to make a decision without listening to the same information that we're getting right now?
Um, thank you, thank you.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I just wanna make, understand that, I just, I, I really clearly, I really do not understand their, their, the logic behind them not being here. I don't, they don't know what's most important than this. Uh, we, we're, democracy is at stake, there's a lot of things at stake, people's livelihoods at stake, as, uh, member, one of the members spoke about. I just, I don't get it. I think they need to really look at themselves in the mirror and, and see who they really are as a people. I mean, why aren't they here? So, um, I'm, I'm okay with going ahead and put the presentation, I'm perfectly fine with it.
Well, I have a, a few, uh, recommendation first. Uh, first of all, I would like to thank for your concerns, and I, I know that there are concern from the people here too. Um, you take your time out of the mid, middle of the day and be here, uh, at the meeting. I know that you are, you concerned about it and you, uh, you want to give your inputs. Uh, we appreciate that. The thing is that we, uh, we don't know what the reason, uh, uh, why they're not here today. Um, but the thing is, is I know that, uh, staff have been doing the work, trying to get every one of us here today. Uh, um, at the last minute, we know that, uh, one of the council cannot make it because due to illness. Um, and I appreciate that we have the consultant here today, and, um, if we have, to me, if I have to hear it over again, I hope that I can hear it over, over again, uh, if we decide to have another meeting on Friday. I don't mind to, to, you know, to hear it, uh, over because that's for the best of the, uh, for the betterment of the city. Uh, if we have four or five people at the next meeting, the thing is, if, what happened if, uh, we don't have four or five people? Then we completely lost our chance of hearing what the consultant or what staff have been doing, the result, uh, of what they've been doing for us.
I agree.
So I think that we, um, I understand that we can't make any decision today, but, uh, let's go for it and, and, and hear what we have.
Yeah, I agree.
Agree.
Okay.
Good decision.
So, thank you. Uh, with that, I think, uh, go ahead and, um, I would like to invite, uh, staff for a staff report, please.
Great. So actually, um, start off again. So just really briefly, um, and thank you, Mayor and Member of the City Council, and of course, members of the community as well, um, and, uh, and staff. Um, so back in June, uh, 2023, as part of the strategic plan, staff presented a report regarding a potential half-cent transactions and use tax as part of the goal to achieve financial stability. Uh, since then, staff has been working with the Lou Edwards Group and FM3 to develop and disseminate a community priority survey, uh, which is consistent, uh, with past practices, uh, when considering a potential TUT. Uh, today, staff and our consultant will be presenting highlights of our previous discussion as well as the results of the survey. Um, I understand the timing to hold this, again, is not ideal, um, outside of a regular meeting, but there is, um, as mentioned, a, a deadline of Friday, December, uh, 8th, that's this Friday, if there is a desire by four members of this council, uh, to place any kind of measure on the ballot. With the recent completion of the survey, um, and given the availability of the results, uh, staff wanted to provide the results of this council and the community as soon as possible, um, and, uh, so that you have the opportunity to discuss, weigh in, and if desired, uh, provide direction or take action. Uh, so with that, I'd like to, uh, turn it over to our Finance Director, Erin Bax, who will start the presentation.
Thank you, Christine. Um, good afternoon, Mayor, council members, members of the community, and staff. Per the strategic plan, oops, let me go forward a slide here. Per the strategic plan, goal one is to achieve financial stability, and one of the objectives approved by the city council previously was consideration of placing a measure on the March 5th, 24 ballot, asking voters if they want to add a half-cent city transaction and use sales tax, um, to the ballot. Information was presented at the June 14th, 23 city council meeting, and discussion resulted in direction to staff to conduct a community survey consistent with previous surveys done to identify priorities and feasibility of an additional half-cent TUT, as well as other revenue options. Consultant FM3 will be, be presenting the survey results later in the presentation. As discussed in June, a half-cent TUT, or transaction use tax, is projected to produce an additional 8 million in revenue. There was also discussion regarding a sunset clause and a designation of a special purpose tax, which requires a two-thirds vote. So first, I want to start with, um, a brief history of the city of Westminster's finances. For decades, Westminster heavily relied on state redevelopment funds, not only to fund special projects allowed by the redevelopment agency, but also to maintain, maintain basic services and staffing levels, or fund expenses that were traditionally funded through the general fund. The state eliminated redevelopment agencies, which left Westminster with a large deficit and the inability to generate substantial revenues to fund basic city services. This resulted in massive layoffs and a reduction and eliminations of services. Bankruptcy was then projected, at that time was projected for fiscal year 2018-19. But with the passing of a, of a one-cent transaction and use tax, known as Measure SS in 2016, basic services were continued, although staffing levels remained minimal and many programs that were eliminated have not been reinstated. Measure SS generated 16 million in revenue, but it was never enough to fund increased service levels or continue at current service levels due to inflation. Measure SS expired on December 31st of '22. In November of '22, voters approved Measure Y, which is a 20-year continuation of the one-cent TUT. Revenue collections began in April of this year. It was understood that Measure Y would not be enough to fund the projected annual deficit of 6 to 8 million, and that reserves would be used to offset this shortage. However, Measure Y has extended the use of reserves, buying time for additional revenue sources to be generated until reserves are depleted. Without significant changes to the rate of revenue collection, the fund balances will drop below the policy threshold of 17% by fiscal year 26-27, and will be completely depleted by fiscal year 27-28. It's interesting to note that the original projections back in 2016 with Measure Y, I mean, excuse me, Measure SS, and the six-year sunset showed the city out of money in fiscal year 23-24. And projections with a continuation of the 1% past the six-year sunset showed the city out of money in '24-25. So even back then, the 1% was never enough to continue city services indefinitely at the same, at current levels. This is a slide, um, that shows these reserve levels. The general fund is below the targeted emergency reserve of 17%, which is represented by the gray shaded area. We're below that in '26-27, and as indicated with the red line of zero, we hit bankruptcy or zero funds in fiscal year 27-28. This is another way of looking at those same numbers, and it shows, um, projected revenue and expenditures, starting with the current year budget, uh, through fiscal year 27-28. Current year uses 6.3 million of reserves, and at the end of the year, we're projected to have a fund balance or a reserve balance of 28.9 million. Again, this shows that we are completely out of funds in fiscal year 27-28. One of the primary discussion points in June was the Revenue and Taxation Code, which allows a city, county, city and county, or other government entity authorized to impose a transaction and use tax not to exceed a combined 2%. This means that another agency can impose a tax for a purpose that is not directly related to the general welfare, welfare, and overall needs of Westminster's community. This slide is a breakdown of sales tax paid in Westminster. Prior to the transaction and use tax, Measure Y, or even Measure SS, the city received 1% in sales tax called the Bradley Burns. With the passing of the measures, the city now receives 2% of the total 8.75% collected in Westminster. In comparison, the state receives almost 4%. County programs receive over 2%, NOCTA directly receives a half percent. The maximum rate in Orange County is 9.25, 7.25 Bradley Burns, and 2% transaction use tax. So just to reiterate how transaction use tax can be imposed by another agency. The first agency to obtain approval of any remaining transaction use tax below the 2% limit secures the revenue. If two agencies get approval of the transaction use tax at the same election, the California Department of Tax and Fee Administration will not administer the TUT, and neither agency will receive the revenue. If a multi-jurisdiction agency imposes a tax that is greater than what is available in the city, it is immediately imposed when the existing city tax expires. A few agencies in California have been successful with state legislation to exceed the 2% cap. There are currently 446 TUTs being collected throughout the state. This table shows the tax rates in the cities surrounding Westminster. This table is also included in the staff report. If the council is interested in placing a measure on the ballot for a March 24 election, the estimated cost is between $136,000 and $162,000, as estimated by the Register of Voters. The deadline to submit documents to the Register of Voters office is this Friday, December 8th, by the end of business. If a TUT is approved by the voters, the first day of collections would commence on the first calendar quarter more than 100 days after voter approval. This could be as late as October 1st of '24 if passed in March pending certification of results. It also takes a quarter after that for the city to see the revenue. So in conclusion, Westminster continues to make progress with revenue generating projects and initiatives, but these continue to take time and effort. None of the options provide an ongoing revenue source that will close the gap, nor is there a large one-time amount that can be captured. There is a half percent available for agencies in Orange County to impose, and the first to secure approval will receive the revenue. If this happens, Westminster's ability to capture revenues that will be, that will directly support the community will be lost. In anticipation of a full depletion of reserves in fiscal year '27-28, absent a large revenue generating source, further reductions will be made, and no supplemental budget requests will be presented, starting with the fiscal year '24-25 budget proposal. At this point, I would like to turn the presentation over to Adam with FM3.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council Members and Staff and Members of the Community for having me and letting me share these results with you. Adam Sunnenschein from Fairbank Maslin Mall and Metson Associates, otherwise known as FM3. We've had the pleasure of working for your city a few times now in the past and hopefully can bring some of that experience and knowledge over the years to help you with this decision. I'm going to take you through the results of the survey, and then we'll maybe have any questions that you want to ask about the way that was conducted or the results. The survey was done in mid-November, just a couple weeks ago, the 8th to the 16th. This was done as a telephone voter survey, meaning all of the interviews were conducted by phone. The folks that we talked to were all residents in your city, considered likely to vote in the March 2024 election based on their past voting history. And those 238 of those survey interviews, meaning you have a margin of error of basically plus or minus six and a half, so keep that in mind as you're looking at some of the results. As I mentioned, we have questions on our survey that are tracked all the way back to 2015. The survey is available in English, Vietnamese, and Spanish, and that at some point you might see something that doesn't quite add up to 100% because we've rounded decimal points. Okay? So just starting with some general community attitudes, we asked people if they had favorable or unfavorable opinions of some of the agencies in the city, some of whom would be quite relevant as it relates to this measure, and you can see that your public safety agencies are viewed very favorably. Both the Police Department and Orange County Fire Authority, in its role serving Westminster, have nearly or approximately eight in 10 voters who have a favorable opinion of them, in the range of six to 13 who have an unfavorable opinion. But if you're kind of following the color scheme here, the dark orange is very unfavorable, and in those cases, very few who have a very unfavorable opinion. And the ratio of very favorable to very unfavorable is quite strong. In addition, there are others that are viewed with a predominant favorability, like your local small business owners, with 70% who have a favorable opinion there. Westminster City Government, still 55 to 30, so more favorable than unfavorable, and the City Council at 48 to 31. And sorry, it looks like there's a little bit of formatting error there in terms of the numbers. But you can see that, you know, there's obviously more mixed opinions about city government than there is about public safety agencies. That's a very common thing to find in almost, in almost every city. And then not very strong recognition or opinions about local taxpayer advocates, with over half a voter saying they don't really have an opinion or they've never really heard of particular advocates in that way. One of the things we're seeing here on this slide is a continued sense of need for additional funding for city services. This is something that we always want to look at in terms of a conceptual feeling about the purpose of a measure that a public agency may be putting forward, whether you're at a city in your case, or a county, or a school district, or any other kind of agency. Do the voters in the area feel that there's a need for additional funding? In your case, as you heard earlier, Measure Y passed last year, but you still have about 70% of the likely March voters who would say there's a great or some need for additional funding, just 27% who would say little or no real need. Now, that's not quite as strong as it had been in the early part of 2022, the last time we asked this question, but still higher than it had been in 2021 or 2015, and quite high for particularly if you're thinking about this half-cent measure as a general purpose, 50% plus one majority measure. We asked people to get a little bit of a flavor of what's the recognition of Measure Y and its impact maybe on feelings about this measure. And we gave people a few statements. We asked them to tell us if they were accurate or inaccurate. You can see the exact wording of the statements in the boxes there. And you can see about half of respondents either perceive or remember Measure Y. Now, they may not remember it exactly the way it was on the ballot, right? Some people think it was an increase in the tax rate. Some people think of it as an extension of a tax rate for a longer period of time. But it's about half who remember, half who don't, and even those who have a recollection, it's not especially strong. If you look at that very accurate number, it's 26% in one case and 17 in the other. So I don't think it's a overarching feeling that's just sort of widespread in the community. Another thing that's sort of helpful as you're considering this is the reaction to this statement. City staff are responsive to residents' needs, 71% consider that accurate, 23% inaccurate, just 6% who don't know. And again, that ratio of very accurate to very inaccurate is more than four to one. So this is a more strongly held view on the accurate side. Then looking at some of the priorities for local funding, one of the things that we wanted to find out in this survey are of the various ways that you could be using this money, what do your voters think is the most important? And so if you're reading this question, you've got extremely important in the dark blue, then very important is the next one, somewhat important in the light blue, then not too important in orange, and don't know in gray. Okay? And one of the things just to take away from this is how small all of the orange bars are on this slide. This is the first of a couple slides on this question. But you'll see that there's many priorities that almost no voters think are not important. Okay? So you don't have an issue where the things that you may be investing these resources in, where voters say, I don't care, that's not a big deal, all of these are things that they would consider to be highly important, you know, on this slide at about 80% or above. At the top of the list, in terms of the top priorities for local funding, you have kind of a range of things. Protecting local drinking water supplies, investing in preventing property crimes, addressing homelessness, preventing the elimination of kind of special policing units such as narcotics, domestic violence, sex crimes, and human trafficking, maintaining the city's ability to respond to a natural or medical disaster, outdated life-saving, upgrading outdated life-saving equipment, or repairing streets and potholes. So if you're kind of looking at this in total, you see there's a mix. The public safety is clearly one of the dominant themes, but it's not the only thing that people care about, which is, I think, why you see, as you will in a few moments, interest in that general purpose measure, which mentions many of these items. As we continue to the next slide and look at some of the other items in terms of their importance, these are, you know, kind of the next tier of things here, where we're under 80%, and the extremely important is, for the most part, in the mid-20s to low 30s. Cleaning litter and trash in neighborhoods and public areas is right there, preventing the elimination of police gang and drug units, or other language relating to clearing homeless encampments, police officer training, retaining local small businesses or local businesses, et cetera. And then you see kind of two conceptual items, in a way, at the bottom of this slide. They're not particular funding uses, but protecting the city's local finances or sustaining the city's long-term financial stability in both cases. Those are pretty highly valued ideas. Then as we continue, again, to just reiterate that there are a wide variety of issues that your voters are considering priorities for funding at pretty high levels here. These still remaining in kind of the high 60s, low 70s, for extremely are very important. Ensuring qualified police officers are not leaving for other forces, preventing cuts to 911 emergency response, keeping public areas safe and clean. You can see some additional items related to public safety, and then at the bottom, maintaining storm drains. And then what I think is the last slide in this section, where we're now kind of in the high 60s, but still, if you notice from most of these, the orange bars, the not-too-important are quite low, with just one exception I'll point out in a moment. Protecting the city's disaster preparedness programs, maintaining fire protection or preventing cuts to the number of firefighters, preserving housing affordable for seniors and veterans. You see some other public safety. And then you see, second from the bottom here, increasing housing that is affordable for middle-class residents is something that some of the voters in your community think is really important, extremely important at 31, and others don't think it's very important at all. You've got 21% in that not-too-important range. So on that particular item, a little more divided opinions than on the ones that I showed you earlier. Okay, so all that is, I think, context and background as you think about the way that voters are perceiving your city overall. Now we get into the specific questions about local revenue options. So I want to take you through the way that these were tested in the survey. We draft hypothetical 75-word ballot titles and summaries. That's the way we've always done it in your city, and we do for almost every city, as a way to understand what voter interest is in these kinds of measures. This language was reviewed by your city attorney to make sure that it would meet legal standards, and it's the kind of thing that you could move forward with before we tested it. You see, we put a title there, calling it the Westminster Safety and Services Stabilization Measure. Then we give some illustrative examples of how funding could be used, and you'll notice that there are some items about public safety, as well as other items there, related to housing affordability, drinking water supplies, local businesses, et cetera. And this is a general purpose measure. This is that half-cent or half-percent sales tax. You can see how much money it would generate, $8.4 million annually. And then some fiscal accountability provisions like audits and public spending disclosure, and the funds would be controlled locally. That's inherent in the measure, whether it's written in there or not, but it's helpful to point that out for folks who may not know and may want to make sure that there are some provisions for fiscal accountability. We also had language related to a continuation of your 1% sales tax that is currently going to 2043. Instead, this would be provided until ended by voters. So you would have that longer timeframe or not-defined timeframe. And we've tested this with many of the same services and illustrative examples as you saw in the prior one, but right in the middle there, you can see this is the continuing the existing voter-approved one-cent or 1% sales tax that would generate an estimated $16.8 million annually. Then lastly, we also asked your respondents about a special purpose half-cent public safety measure. This one, you can see all the examples are related to public safety. There are known of the other kinds of services, and because this is, would be a dedicated measure, it would require a two-thirds vote in order to be approved. Now, one of the things we found in the survey is the importance of information and making sure that people are aware of some of the reasons you're pursuing this measure. So wanted to start with some of the themes about, that indicate interest in this measure or these measures. Some of them relate to response times and maintaining those. You can see 86% found that to be a convincing theme. Homelessness and the need to continue to address it, 79%. And then crime, particularly referencing the number of robberies and burglaries, as well as car thefts, and the fact that in recent years, state prisons have given early release to many criminals, and helped people recognize the importance of this kind of funding, and that was convincing to 72% of people. Fiscal accountability, I mentioned when we looked at the wording of the questions. You can see that was also important, as well as local control. And as you know, this measure would be legally required to be spent in Westminster, controlled by Westminster, not taken by the county or the state. And then lastly, in this slide, that the city could be losing experienced qualified police officers to nearby cities, and so this measure would provide that funding that's necessary or helpful to retain those officers. That was convincing to 68% of the respondents. We looked at also themes related to cleanup and the need to clean up litter and trash on many streets, as well as sort of street and pothole repairs. Here, you can see these are a little bit lower than those other ones, 65 and 64% respectively. So here's where we kind of get to where the rubber meets the road, so to speak, and that is opinions on these measures. This is for the half-percent measure first, that general purpose measure. 58% indicated that they would vote yes on that compared to 42%, and of course, that needs a 50% plus one majority vote, so that is above that threshold. The 1% continuation measure until ended by voters gets a stronger support at 65 to 24, with a few more who are undecided. And then the half-percent public safety dedicated measure, actually, interestingly, gets kind of the same vote as that half-percent general purpose measure, but as I mentioned, needs a two-thirds support. So that one does not reach that requirement based on the results of this survey. And you can see, we have it broken down here between definitely yes in the dark blue, probably or undecided, but leaning yes in the light blue, the probably undecided and leaning no in the light orange, and the definitely no in the darker orange. We did ask about a half-percent, excuse me, a nine-year sunset on the half-percent rate, and found essentially the same level of support. Didn't really change voters' opinions, and that's actually consistent with what we've found in past years compared to a measure that'd be in effect until ended by voters. So lastly, just building on the results and talking with the city about what its interests are and where your priorities lie, put together a 75-word ballot title and summary that I think maybe we'll hold off on discussing further today, since, as you know, you can't take action on that right now. So I'm happy to take questions or answer anything I can for you.
Thank you very much. At this point, I would like to open up for our council question to staff as well as the consultant on the presentation. I know that you guys are going to ask a lot of questions, but let's, you know, ask enough questions so that the other council can ask questions, as well as for me too. But if, I don't mind if you guys ask questions, I don't have to do it again. But starting with Council Member Mensah.
Thank you, Mayor. A question on, how many phone calls were actually made?
You know what, I don't have it at my fingertips, but I know it's probably several thousand. As you know, you call a lot of people, they don't pick up the phone, right? Or they go to voicemail. We tend to find that when we reach people and we get through the first couple seconds of saying this is about a survey and it's going to be about your community, tends to be easier to hold people, but harder to get them to pick up the phone.
Okay.
I thought you said 238 something?
It's 238 who completed the survey from beginning to end, but the council member's question of how many actual, like, numbers were dialed? Yeah, I don't, I don't know, other than to say it's several thousand, I can find out and get back to you if you'd like.
Okay, no, that's fine, I'm just curious. The other thing is, I think, we need to do, just for the sake of the community, can we do, really go over the scenario of other, the possibility of another agency capturing that half percent? And also, the 1% one that expires, the timeline that they can do that, they can do that now? I mean, can you really, for the community's sake, really hone down and explain that as clearly as you possibly can?
Yes, absolutely. So there's only 2% allowed to be added on by any agency that's able to collect a tax. Currently, there's only a half-cent available, a half percent, because Westminster has one and OCTA has a half. Westminster's has a sunset. If Westminster's sunsets, but in the meantime, before ours ends in '43, if another agency within the- within the county came through and added a measure for whatever purpose, that would be collected, and it would have precedent over ours when ours ends. So say we have a 20-year, the county comes in and adds a 1% that starts in, I don't know, 2000, in 2030. I'm just making up a number. When ours ends after 20 years, the county immediately gets implemented, because they've had it approved during the time that ours was being collected. So at that point, ours ends, we can't go back and add it unless theirs was a, had a sunset in it, and then we'd have to wait till theirs was collected and ended, and then we'd have to have a vote to have it put back. So that's where somebody can take what we already have with the sunset. In addition, the half-cent available goes to the first person that gets it, or the first agency that gets it, I shouldn't say person. And so say we wait and then decide later that we want to go after it, but in the meantime, again, the county comes in and secures it, the half-cent, or even a one, they would get the portion available in Westminster. So say the county comes in again with a one, there's a half available, they would get the half in Westminster. When ours ends, then they'd get the whole one.
And once it's, if their measure states that there's no sunset, then?
It's there, and we have no option to collect it.
And the residents have no, they will still be paying, we will still be paying that, but it would not be staying local here for our, we would risk losing our PD, we're losing services, and there's absolutely nothing that our taxpayers can do, our residents can do. You're still be paying the tax and losing services at the same time.
That's absolutely correct.
Yeah. Just want to make, I think we need to really hone down on that explanation for the community, what the risks are. Because as we know, there's other agencies out there that are looking to see what we would do. So, thank you. That's all I got for now.
I just have a follow-up question for you. When he asked that, what agency, and I know that you mentioned OCTA, is there any potential agency that may come in and claim for the additional tax that they, the half-percent I'm talking about?
I'm not aware. I mean, I don't know if there's talks being had by additional agencies, but I do know of the, I believe it was 400, being collected in the state. They're for many purposes. They're being collected across the state for homeless, they're for medical. So it could be any purpose that somebody could come in, somebody, I keep saying somebody, I'm sorry. I mean, some agency that could come in and secure the funding for transportation, for many purposes that are not specific to the needs of Westminster residents.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, yeah, an example would be in Los Angeles, where they did it for homelessness. So again, it's countywide, or it's applying everywhere. And to kind of piggyback on what Finance Director indicated, you apply it countywide, so it takes that tax up in every city. And so if a city's already taken it there and it isn't available, that state, that county, countywide tax wouldn't apply in the city, because the city had already taken it. But if that city tax expires at any point, the tax that's already being applied everywhere will suddenly apply here. They'll take that money, and we don't have a right to re-up it. So I just wanted to piggyback on that.
Thank you. Councilmember Ho.
I don't really have questions, but I do have some concerns and some suggestions. I think our, I think the three of us here today, three councilmembers, have heard, you know, about this tax measure many times. And of course, today you're explaining about the half-percent that is left for us to capture so that we could continue to service our community. But my concern is that this is a lot of information for the new councilmembers who have never been through or heard any presentations about the, not the one cent, and now the half-cent. So I would suggest that you meet individually, if that's legal, if that's possible, because I think we're kind of on a, we're at a different level with me, you know what I mean? It's like, that's why there's only one or two questions from us up here. But I can just imagine that, number one, is that they have to understand the fundamentals around, you know, the extra one cent, the half-cent, and how we got here, and why we're here, why we're asking with the extra half-cent and all that. So how can this be understood in one session? So, and everybody's going to have their own learning curve, their own, they're going to learn at their own pace. So my suggestion, if that's possible, is for you to meet individually with them, or even with the two of them together. And then we can have another session Friday. Yes?
I guess I appreciate your concerns there, but I'm afraid that we are running out of time.
Yeah.
I know that we have only until this Friday.
Yeah.
It's very difficult for us to.
Actually, that's, thank you. And then actually, the first note I have here is that, my question to you is that, why is it that we always wait until the 11th hour? I don't understand, because I know that this is like the first time, first presentation, but previously, you know, regarding the one-cent tax, you know, we had many back and forth. And then I understand, we even had one at the very, very last minute, and then city clerk had to run straight to the ROV, and, you know, by 5 o'clock and et cetera. So that I understood. But then why this one? Today's the 6th, when you said that the 8th, that's like the 8th of what, December? Oh my gosh, that's only two days away. So I was just wondering if you have a reason, you know, around that? Or maybe your survey didn't conclude until recently or something?
I can actually, yes, I can actually address some of those concerns. So in the past, when we've done, when we've gone through this exercise, we've had what we would call 221 meetings, in which we did meet with the councilmembers individually to go over the results in advance of, you know, this, so that you had an opportunity to ask, you know, questions, because we didn't always have the privilege of having our consulting team at the meetings. Unfortunately, you know, we were provided, you know, direction back in June, and as you know, there was a period of time in which there were some occurrences and distractions within the city that unfortunately prevented us from moving faster with, you know, with the survey. So when we were able to get to a point of working with our consultants to develop the survey questions, and of course, it takes, you know, several versions to get it right, by the time we were able to, you know, to finalize the survey questions and get it out, you know, this is a busy season for our consultants as well, because they are up and down the state doing the exact same thing. We couldn't complete the survey until, you know, just a few weeks ago. So, you know, it's really, it really is timing. It's a process, it's timing. But, you know, unfortunately, with the election being in March now, as opposed to June, you know, in the past, that has also brought our deadline up a little bit, you know, earlier as well. So, you know, I understand that the timing is not ideal. I would love to have as much time to go over these with, you know, with all the councilmembers as well. The intent was, you know, before today's meeting, is that if any of the councilmembers, you know, would like to have additional time, we did afford that time for, you know, to meet with the councilmembers that wanted to, you know, were able to be at this meeting today. We did afford the opportunity to have a meeting prior to today, so, you know, that's.
I see. Well, I just have a follow-up comment, is that, you know, someone like myself, I've just, I understand clearly and thoroughly why we need the one-cent tax and why we need the half-cent tax. As I was on the Financial Task Force, if you remember, back in 2015, so looking at every line item, and so I understand why, why, why. So it's just to be fair to the other two councilmembers, to have the understanding, I mean, no matter what, there may be lots of very good excuses and reasons why we're doing it at the last minute, but I think for them to cast their vote, we still need to give them that time to digest and to be fair to them, because you do want them to vote either way, you know? So that's only my suggestion. And I think it's just a very, since I'd have to say, a very big concern, because if you want it to be a success, you will reach out to them like immediately after and to say, you know, this is what, you know, we got, got it, I'm going to offer. I think you can only offer, you can't force them. Yeah, thank you.
I totally agree with Councilmember Ho, that we take every chance that we can have. So after the meeting today, well, the intention is to see if we can have another meeting on Friday, but after this meeting, you know, try your best to reach out and give them more information about, you know, things that we want to do and other, and see if they can also attend the meeting on Friday. I'm sure that the three of us will offer, you know, our schedule if convenient for them, so that we can, you know, get this one out.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I just wanted to share one other bit of information regarding timing. Given, as you, as we discussed during the last time this issue has come up, there's a, once you adopt it, even if it's approved, there's a delay until it actually gets implemented. And the way that it plays out in this particular situation, being a March election, you have to have ordinances approved, elections certified, and then 110 days, and then you go to the first calendar quarter. It has to start at the beginning of a quarter. More than likely, even if we go through with this in March, it won't go into effect till October 1st. So if you wait until, and if you wait till another election, at the earliest, it would be April 1st. So what we're talking about is, you know, approximately every quarter would be about $2 million. So delays do have financial impacts, so I'm just trying to mention that for purposes of you helping to make decisions on this.
Appreciate that. I have a question for staff. I know that a while ago, that you have a chart that going down for reserve over the years, the deficit for, over the years, can you, if you don't have the chart ready, can you go ahead and tell us, you know? I know that for this year, we are 6.5 million deficit, and the next year, with my memory, the next year is 9 million, and the other, the following year, also $9 million. And then we will go deep into the whole, is that correct?
That is correct. So there was one that was shown a little bit earlier, and I'm not sure what page this is, but anyway, the gray shaded area is our target. So our fund balance policy has us staying above the 17% target emergency reserve. So this is our reserve balance based on the current adopted budget, and we hit the 17% by, or we go below it in fiscal year '26, '27. So continuing to use reserves, you can see right here where the teal line and the red line cross, this is where we hit zero. We're completely out of money in fiscal year '27, '28. So anything that, any additional revenue, any cuts in services could prolong this, but at our current funding levels and our current revenues, this is where we are out of money.
Thank you very much. I understand that we, as city council and city staff, we have several projects going on, but it's no way to take us there in time before we get deep into the whole. Can you roll up to page number 14?
Which page? Which is 14?
This is not 14, right?
Which one? Which page?
Page 14, 14. I believe that the 75 words that you come up with.
Oh, yours. Okay.
Oh, definitely.
Could I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Director Aaron Bax, I really like that graph. Very good graph. Yes, yes. That's the best one I've seen.
I should be more clear on that.
Oh, 14 is the presentation. 14, this one, the one that was tested in the survey.
Well, anyway, I saw in that, yeah, it's mentioned right there. If we implement, let's say that we get the half-percent self-tax passed, and we start collecting it, and it will be estimated 8,400,000 annually, do you think that can offset, let's say for next year or the following year, do you think it's going to offset the $9 million that we're talking about?
So first of all, I want to say that those numbers are coming in closer to 8 million now for the projection. These were based back in our early, our projections in June, but our first-quarter receipts that we've had from Measure Y are less than Measure S-S, the same quarter last year. So we have reduced that to eight, but given our current deficit of 6.3, this 8 million would cover it, we'd still need those additional revenues, options that we're looking at and that are going to take some time to implement. But this definitely gets us current or balanced in the current, well, wouldn't in the current year, because it wouldn't be implemented in time, but it gets us a lot closer and gives us time to implement those other options that we're looking at.
Okay. So we are not going to ask for another self-tax increase?
There is nothing else available. This would be the last piece of that.
I have a question for you, consultant. I know that you finalized with 3238 people that you surveyed. How do you break down or broken down into the number of people from different communities?
Yeah, it's a very good question. So what we attempt to do is reflect the population of your likely voters on a number of factors, including where they live in the city, their ages, their genders, their affiliations with different political parties, but also their racial and ethnic backgrounds. And so in this case, in the survey, 36% of the respondents identified themselves as Vietnamese. So we asked people, we're not telling, we're not just going by their name or something like that. 36% identified as Vietnamese, 31% identified as white, 16% as Latino, 7% as an Asian or Pacific Islander community other than Vietnamese, 2% as African-American, 4% in a group that I haven't mentioned, that they said they didn't feel they felt and fell into any of those categories, and 3% who preferred not to answer.
Okay. I know there's a chart with the, all the cities with the percentage for the, can you bring that one up again? Thank you very much. This is the one that I'm talking about. Yeah, if you look at the rate column there, you can see that beside Long Beach, which is different county we don't know, talking about, but all of them is 8.75, except in the last, Alameda's 9.25, and Santana, 9.25. But for Santana, they also have this sunset for 10 years. That's the reason why I think the last time we brought up nine years, just so that we can, at this point here, we would like to correct the deficit that we have, and hopefully by that time, we have all the projects that we are working on right now can offset some of those so that we can decide at the time later that the reason why we have the option of sunset for nine years, so that we can convince people that we don't want to raise tax. But because of the situation that we are in, we need your help at the moment for us to get our feet up and running on some of the projects that we already implement or will be implemented. So I believe that, I don't know that, you know, for the people who look at this and said, wow, Westminster City, wow, now it's 9.25. And if we go without sunset, and especially whether we go with a continuation for the 1% for the Measure Y, I think we may have a problem with that. I don't know that your assessment on that.
So first, I'd like to say, it can always be ended. So even if we went without a continuation? So even if we went without a continuation, it could be ended by the voters. If we don't go, or if we go with a sunset, and somebody else comes in and approves, passes something, say, a 1%, we have no ability to capture that in the future if we still need it.
Do you foresee if, you know, of course, that they have to go through the voters for that, and if they have to go to voters, at that point, see if Westminster, can we do anything to, to go against that?
No, because we couldn't go on the same ballot as somebody else. I mean, we could, but if ours passed and theirs passed, it's not going to be, neither going to be implemented. I think it would end up in, in court, and the CD TFA will not implement if they both get approved. So then we're both, both agencies are out until further decision or an additional vote. But if somebody came in, say, like you mentioned, continuation of our 1%, if somebody came in before that was continued, again, we would lose that in 20 years, and not have that ability to get that either. So I, I think that the best is to go without, I mean, personally, just seeing the finances for the city. I've been here a long time, the numbers don't change. As I had mentioned earlier, we're off of a few years on where we thought we'd hit bankruptcy, but things have happened, but not, not far. So it's better to secure it and then let the voters have the ability to end it versus giving the option to another agency to take it before we could resecure it.
Okay. Thank you very much. I would like to move back to Councilmember Menzo, if there is any addition.
Just a quick follow-up. So I, I get it, I just want you to say it out loud. So if the council were to choose a sunset, another agency, they don't have to wait till the end of that sunset, they can put a measure on a ballot early, much earlier, and, and secure that, and they're just waiting, it would just wait until our sunset. So that would put our resident, our residents at risk, because some other, another agency would secure it before, way ahead before our sunsets, way ahead.
That's correct.
And then there's nothing you can do, nothing you can do after that.
If we put it on March, and the voters approved it, and it had a sunset, and then in November, another agency put one on, and that didn't have a sunset, they would have it, we would have no options at that point.
Again, that's all I have, but I just want to go back to, you know, I don't know, I don't know what, if somebody has, can really stress the importance of attending council meetings to Vice Mayor and Councilmember West, that this is, this is what, this is what we signed up for to do, to, to take on the responsibility and make a commitment to what we were elected for, to, to represent the residents. And I don't, I just, I still, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm being too harsh, but I just don't understand what, what can been more important, you know, photo opportunities at another event, that to me, that's not, it's not more important than being here and doing what we were elected to do. Playing games, I don't know, I don't know, I'm just speculating what, why they're not here. Again, we can choose to table this and, and give them another opportunity, I'm, I'm okay, you know, you know me, whatever I have to do to represent and protect our city, that's what I will do. So if the council chooses to have another meeting on Friday, I'll be here.
Thank you very much. I would like to ask Councilmember Hall if there's any question for staff or for consultant before I can do my recommendation.
No, I have no questions, and I believe staff and the consultant did really a great job in presenting to us, you know, a pretty comprehensive overview, and so this kind of serves as a, kind of a refresher, reminder, but all this is very important to our city, and ditto, you know, the comments of both Mayor and Councilmember Carlos Manzo there. And so I'm just thinking, again, it is really, to me, it's just a reminder, the explanation of the half cent tax, which I already knew about, the reasons why and all that, but I think this is so much information, to tell you the truth, and it's information that I have learned over five or seven years. So it's not easy for someone new to come on board and just be in one meeting, to, to no meeting at all, to grasp or kind of study on his or her own. So I don't know what the answer is, but I think if it's really important to us, we would reach out and, you know, help them understand, because I want them to make an informed decision. This is really affecting the lives and livelihood of our community, our first line, you know, PD as well as fire. And so I really think in order for us to run a city, we need to, to, especially when we need that extra vote, we only, there are only three of us on, on the council right now. So, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you very much, Councilmember Hall. Thank you, Councilmember Menzo. I, I think that, you know, we all know that the three of us cannot put the measure on the ballot, so there's no action today, but I appreciate staff and consultant give us the update of what, you know, we have gone through for the last several months. Really, those information is very important for us, and hopefully that we, we have the next meeting, the follow-up meeting, that, and I said earlier, I don't mind to, you know, to come back here and hear it over, over again. And at this time here, I think that, you know, I don't want to deep down, dig down into that anymore, because we can't make a decision anyway. So I would like to recommend that for staff, why don't we reach out with the other two councils and see if you can schedule for a Friday for another meeting, for another special meeting. I would like to ask Councilmember Menzo and Councilmember Hall, are you, have any restriction scheduled on Friday, so that staff can do their job?
If I may answer first?
Yes.
As a matter of fact, I do, but this is very important, so I will clear my calendar, and I'm not going to put any restrictions, so whatever time, date, work for people, I will be here.
Can, can we start with a baseline of maybe 10:00 AM on Friday for this group, and then I will reach out to the other two councilmembers to, to find a, you know, to see if 10:00 AM works or find alternative times?
That's fine with me.
As for me, I, I have 8:30, 12:00, 4:00, 6:00 PM meeting, but I will put that all aside if, if, to adopt the other schedule. What about Councilmember Menzo?
Yeah, I mean, I have a full-time job, so I have to, I'm always have to be somewhere, so, but I'll be here. I mean, you said, I think you need to set up a time, and let's just agree to be here.
So at this point here, I, at this time, do I need to make a motion to ask for a special meeting on, on Friday? See that thing?
We're, I think, since we don't know the time, no. I think you just renotice it as a new special meeting.
Yeah, it'll, it'll be a new meeting, because we, because we can't come up with the time right now, and we have to check with the other councilmembers. It won't be a regular adjourned meeting, it just becomes a new special meeting.
Okay. If no other questions, I'd like to adjourn the meeting today.
One more question. Sorry, Mayor. But there is, you are on a time limit as far as if it were, so to get it to the ROV, if that were the case, right? So you're not, you're not going to, you need to schedule it as early as possible.
Yes, so the early, the earlier, the better, because depending on how things go, if there is something that is, you know, to be adopted, we would obviously need to, you know, update the documentation and prepare them, and actually travel, we need to physically turn them into the ROV, so.
Physically turning in on Friday at 5?
Physically turn them in, yes.
Again. Okay, so...
So we don't know, we don't even know whether we have four or five people, a councilmember on Friday. So at this time, I adjourn the meeting, but keep our eyes open. We will depend on staff, and I'll get back with us on that.
If, if, if I may, if I may ask, because I, you know, it's always, it's always a challenge trying to get every five people's schedules together for Friday, is there still an interest to have the meeting if, if, if there's only, if we're only successful in getting three? Is this council still interested in having, holding a meeting?
But I don't see the point.
Yes, I don't see the point.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. With that, I adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for being here.